Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we are going to start the meeting off tonight with the program review, which is the audit presentation by Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board. I'm Aaron Dahl, Audit Manager of Bergen KDV. Thank you for the opportunity to be your district's auditors again this year and the opportunity to present tonight. We'll start with independent auditors' reports. So we issue our opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements are management's responsibility. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on them. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the best opinion we can give as auditors. With that opinion, we're stating that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and change in financial position for the financial statements. We also issue a report in accordance with government auditing standards. We did note one internal control finding, which is the lack of segregation of accounting duties, which is a similar finding that the district had in the past, basically just stating there is some overlap in duties within the business office. Nothing that was of concern for us as auditors, but there is that opportunity for some overlap there within the accounting duties. With that, no compliance findings, so nothing in accordance with government auditing standards that we found there. We also issue a report on compliance in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. So that's kind of triggered when a district has at least 750,000 in federal expenditures, so we're required to do what's called a single audit. With that, we issued an unmodified opinion on compliance with the requirements of the major federal program. And this year, we tested the child nutrition cluster, so nothing that we found of concern there. And the last report is the report on Minnesota legal compliance. So that's where we take a look at certain things like collateral bids, conflicts of interest, things of that nature. And happy to report no findings on compliance with the legal provisions within the Minnesota Legal Compliance Guide for local governments. So good, clean reports all the way around our testing for fiscal year '23. Next, we'll dive into some of the financial analysis, and starting with a chart just kind of showing the general education aid formula allowance there for the past years. So with that, there was a 2% increase again for 2023. It had been 2.5% the previous year and actually jumped up to 4% for fiscal year '24. So if student counts kind of stay the same, you should see a nice jump in your general education aid for the upcoming year. Next, we'll take a look at the resident ADM. So the ADM or student counts kind of dictate how much money you get from the state, especially that general education aid. There was an increase of 1.9% for fiscal year '23, so it increased from about 2183 up to 2225 on the resident side. Over the past five years, there has been a decrease of about 3.8%. So as you can see, back in 2019, it was up over 2,300, but there have been increases in the past three years to kind of get back to that level. Kind of the same information here, just in bar graph form, and we have the different kind of student grades and levels broken out there as well. As you can see, there was kind of that drop in 2021. That's when most districts were kind of hit hard with the COVID years and some drops in student counts there. But as you can see, the past two years, again, there is that increase. Most notably, you can see in the kindergarten and elementary categories is where the biggest increases have occurred. So that kind of signals that the district is growing with those younger grades. Next, we have the pupil units. So the resident ADM and the ADM numbers are converted into what's called pupil unit numbers, and that's what the aids are based upon. So the first chart there, you can see just kind of the weighting system. There is the 1.2 factor for the secondary, while the rest are mostly at the 1 factor. And then we have the pupil unit served numbers for each of the past five years. So kind of similar to the resident ADM, there was an increase for 2023 of about 19 pupil units, which was an increase of about 0.7%. Over the five-year trend, there's been a decrease of about 72 or 2.7% over that five years. Next, we have the change in resident ADM and pupil unit served, just based on percentage for each year. So as I kind of alluded to earlier, 2021 saw that big drop there, as you can see in the middle, with decreases in both the ADM and pupil unit served. But they have rebounded a little bit here in 2022 and again in 2023 and trending upward after that COVID impact. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund sources of revenue. So we have the previous five years presented here. State revenue, which makes up the largest percentage of the district's revenue at 78%, did increase during fiscal year '23 by about 750,000. That was in part with the increase in enrollment that we discussed, along with the increase in the formula allowance. And there was also an increase noted for special education aid. Local property taxes, which represents about 15% of the district's general fund revenues, increased by about 108,000 for the year with an increase in the tax levy allocation. And then the final category of other revenues, which accounts for about 7% of the general fund revenue for the year, also increased by about 472,000, and that was due to some increase in interest rates, so improved investment market, along with some increased federal funding. The federal sources are included in this other category. Here in bar graph form, as you can see, there's been a steady rise over the past four years. It has increased by a little over 1.4 million and is at its highest point for 2023. So a little bit of a drop between 19 and 20, but has increased in each of the last four years. Kind of another factor is taking a look at the revenues per ADM served, so comparing the revenues to kind of those student counts. There was an increase between 2022 and 2023. You can see it went up from about 12,126 up to 12,593. And then we also have the state averages below as well. So as you can see, the district's kind of been consistently below the state average, but there was that increase in 2023 as the revenue increase outpaced that increase in student counts. All right. Similar, we have the general fund expenditures per ADM served. So we have the district's numbers, the state average, and then kind of the district's peer group, which has districts with an ADM between 2,000 and 4,000. Similar to the revenues, the district's general fund expenditures per ADM served have been consistently under the state average for each of the years, but it is closer to the peer group. So as you can see, kind of that far right column, the gray column, is closer in line with the green column, which is the district's numbers. Next, we have a couple pie charts, just breaking down the general fund expenditures based on the percentages by program. As you can see, they're pretty similar between the two years. There were a little bit of a change, plus or minus a couple percentage points, but for the most part, expenditures by category remained similar. The three instruction categories of regular instruction, vocational instruction, and special education do comprise 66% for fiscal year '23 compared to 64% for 2022. So a little bit of an increase in the expenditures for instruction for 2023, which is good to see. The majority of the general fund expenditures are going towards instruction and the students. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund budget and actual results. So originally, in that far-left column, you can see the district budgeted for a deficit of a little over 1.8 million. The budget was adjusted during the year to show a projected deficit of about 455,000. And then the actual results at the end of the year, revenues did exceed expenditures by about 302,000. And then factoring in other financing sources, there was a fund balance increase of a little over 409,000 for the general fund, so the bottom line there in the actual amounts column. Overall, the general fund revenues were under budget by about 0.9% and expenditures were under budget by about 3.4%. So you can see that total variance in the bottom-right corner of about 864,000 on the plus side. Total revenues were under budget by about 287,000, with the largest variance being in revenue from the state sources based on some lower enrollment figures than anticipated. Total expenditures were under budget by a little over 1 million, with the largest variance being in the sites and buildings program, with some unspent budgets for long-term facility maintenance projects during the year. And the expenditures were primarily under budget due to conservative budgeting, so it's always tough to pinpoint exactly where things will be at the end of the year. But over most programs, they were under budget with the exception of the district's support services. Next, we have the general fund operations for the previous five years, so kind of breaking down the revenues and expenditures along with the components of fund balance here. Overall, fund balance, again, increased by about 409,000 for the year. This is the first time in four years there was an increase in fund balance, so trending in the right direction there. Total revenue increased by 4.6%, while total expenditures increased by just 0.9%. The most significant fund balance change in 2023 can be seen in the long-term facility maintenance category, so I think the third from the bottom there. That increased from about 1.3 million at the end of fiscal year '22 up to a little over 1.9 million at the end of fiscal year '23. The unassigned portion did decrease a little bit, so that's kind of the first line there in the components. It was about 4.5 million, down to a little over 4.46 million. Next, we have the fund balance as a percent of expenditures, taking a look at the district's numbers along with the average across the state for the past five years. The calculations above do reflect the unassigned, committed, and non-spendable fund balance of the general funds, so the unrestricted portion of fund balance. From 2019 to 2021, the fund balance remained above the state average. There was a little bit of a dip in 2022 as it fell below the state average, and then it did fall a little bit again in 2023 based on the unassigned portion that we discussed. At the end of the year, the district had approximately three months of expenditures in total fund balance based on the 2023 levels. And then we have the general fund fund balance in comparison with the cash and investments. So as you can see with the chart, those tend to go up and down similarly throughout each of the five years. For 2023, the cash and investment balance increased by about 559,000. All right. And then lastly, we have the special revenue funds. So starting with the food service fund, we have the five years presented here. For 2023, the revenues exceeded expenditures by about 142,000, and it was a surplus for the third straight year. So as you can see, kind of the third line from the bottom, there was a deficit for 19 and 20, but saw increases for each of the past three years. Revenues did decrease by about 43,000, while expenditures increased by 193,000 for the year. Both revenues and expenditures were both impacted by the free meals not being offered to all students in 2023 through the federal funding. It did cause an increase in sales, but a decrease in federal revenue. Expenditures also increased with some credit card fees for families paying for meals in 2023 that way, along with some new equipment purchases during the year. And then lastly, we have the community service funds. So revenues for this fund increased by about 337,000, while expenditures increased by about 230,000 for the year. Revenues increased with increased activity and programming, as that continued to rebound after the COVID impact. The increased expenditures were primarily the result of costs related to office reconstruction, along with some middle school sports running through community education as well. The end result, the fund balance did increase with an operating excess of about 187,000 for the year. And taking a look at the bottom line, up over 400,000 at the end of 2023, which is the highest of the five years presented for the community service fund. So good to see that trending in the right direction. That was the fund that seemed to get hit hardest during the COVID years. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments the board may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a point of clarification. When you saw the percentage on the fund balance of, I believe it was back, it was 19,000 or 19% somewhere in there, that's the combined unassigned and restricted. So you have, you know, I had mentioned that we were, you know, Mary had mentioned we were close in the work session of 15%. That's the unassigned fund balance. That's the one that we have some discretion with. But when the audit report is given, it's combined. That's why you see the discrepancy there. So we have a fund balance, but it's restricted or assigned to a specific piece.
In the state's eyes and in the auditor's eyes, Fund One and Fund Five, which we keep capital in LTFM separate from our general fund, they're added together as one, so that's the difference.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Up next is the consent agenda. You have all the financials for the last month as well as the...
Madam Chair, we have another presentation.
Oh, we have World's Best Workforce. It was hidden under B. I never expect to be. Monica Kunkel. I was ready to go on to Financial Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Board. I am here to present the World's Best Workforce Report for the school year of 2023. This is state-mandated by Minnesota Statute 120B, adopted in 2013, and it covers five areas: kindergarten readiness, you can go to the next slide, grade-level literacy at third grade, closing achievement gaps between different populations of students, college and career readiness, and our graduation rate. So our first goal is all students are ready for kindergarten, and we use three measures to look at this. The first is that we would screen all students prior to the age five, so that they are, we know where they're at as kindergarten-ready, and we had 73.7% of the students who were screened prior to age five. But 100% of them were screened before they actually started their first day of kindergarten. We have to have that done, so we do screen 100%. The idea about getting them screened early is that we can identify students who may have needs that can be addressed with some special supports. Measure two is we take a look at the number of kids in our preschool programs to measure, see the effectiveness there. And we had, the goal was to have moved from 87 to 90% who are, will measure kindergarten-ready on the e-reading assessment. And this past year, we had 84.8% of our kindergarteners who had gone through DPS preschool that measured low risk on the e-reading fall assessment. That is 66 children total. And then we look at overall our kindergarten readiness, and 81.7% of our kindergarteners achieved the low risk on the e-reading fall assessment. The next slide. This just looks, this is in graph form, so you can see where we've gone in terms of trending since 2019. There was a big jump in 2021, but we had a big increase in enrollment in 2021. That was a special year. Next slide. Measure three is the e-reading and the subtest risk skill level. I just broke it down into the five components of that e-reading. Four components, I'm sorry. There's concepts of print letter names, letter sounds, and onset sounds, and those are the different areas that measure that early reading in kindergarten. So it shows you where our students fall within that. So low risk, some risk is where we want, low risk is where we want our kids to be, and we want that red one, high risk, to be really low. Next. We always present our goals for next year, so kindergarten readiness. We will screen 100% of students entering kindergarten prior to the first day of kindergarten. And then the percentage of students who are enrolled in our DPS and score low risk will increase from 84.8% to 87%. Actions with Impact, this is how we're going to do that increase. We are implementing MTSS with a Tier One focus in '23, '24, including in our kindergarten. They are looking at TS Gold, which is their kindergarten, I'm sorry, preschool readiness curriculum, and they are doing a lot of professional development with that this year during our late starts. And then they're also doing some collaborative planning in their TS Gold lesson plans. Next, Goal Two, all students are reading at grade level by the end of third grade. Our goal was to increase the percentage of second and third graders who earned the College Pathway or Low Risk on the FastBridge A-reading from 77% to 82%. And we ended up getting to 80.32% on the spring assessment, falling a little short. But our third graders were at 86.4% at College Pathway on Low Risk, so that was good. Next slide. If you look, this is the graph form of that, so the 80.32 is our College Pathway and Low Risk, and we want both of those measures, those bars, to increase in the orange, and then the some risk and high risk to decrease. We ended up with a slight increase in high risk, but a significant drop in some risk. And then I put the MCA data next to that, so that you have a comparative measure on how the FAST and the MCA somewhat reflect each other. We had 74% of our students proficient, so it's a little bit different percentage, but also a little bit different test than the A-reading. And it's one day in time, and kids are somewhat stressed when they're taking that one-day-in-time test. And then I gave you the state comparison as well. Next slide. And this is comparative data of schools our size, so Delano is the black bar. 73.62% of our third graders are literate, achieve grade-level literacy, whereas the state is at 47%. And then the schools surrounding us, about our size, we surpass all of those schools. And then I also put the big three at the end, so you can see how we measure on the MCA against schools around the state.
That's pretty impressive, right?
Yeah.
I don't even know what question to ask, but like whenever I see us above Wazetta and Edina and places like that, I mean Hutchinson, of course, we're going to be above them, but... So shout out to the teachers. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah. And they have worked really hard over the past couple of years because COVID didn't do any of us any favors, right? So our kids are, our kids are working hard and our teachers are working hard, and that's evidence of that. Next slide. Our World's Best Workforce Goal has changed due to recent legislation, the READ Act, and that we will be measuring all students' grade-level literacy next year, so we will have kindergarten for second, third grade, because it is now that all students will read at grade level according to the READ Act. So we'll be expanding the reporting on that grade-level literacy data. Next slide. So the actions with impact continue being implementation of the MTSS Tier One. Professional learning on the interpretation and use of the screening data to identify improvements in Tier One instruction. We will also have some science of reading professional development that is required by the state, and we're in the process of figuring out what that's going to look like in Delano. And our teachers are revisiting press training at the primary and intermediate school, and that's some additional training to help those students who are not meeting grade-level reading markers. Next slide. Closing the achievement gap. The district will decrease the proficiency achievement gap between students receiving special ed services and those not in special ed, while increasing the proficiency gap of all students on all MCA assessments. That was a lofty goal. Our MCA reading gap actually increased in 2023. We went from 35% to 36.4%. The MCA proficiency gap decreased slightly, but not for the reasons that we wanted it to decrease. So if you look at the measure data, our students receiving special ed services, their achievement level decreased slightly, as well as the entire student population who took the MCAs. Their proficiency levels decreased slightly. And in math, our students receiving special ed services stayed the same, while the rest of the student population lost some ground on our math proficiency. If you look, this is a graph form of that, gives you the trend lines over the last five years. 2020, again, was the year that we did not have any MCA administered. And that shows you reading, non-spent students versus students receiving special ed services. The next one is math with the trend line presented. And then the next set of data are other groups that we report gap on. This is our English language learners. I'm sorry, these gaps are, graphs are rather small, but I tried to fit them all on one. So you have math on the left, the statewide proficiency versus the Delano proficiency. We have a very small number of English language learners. I think of the students that get tested, there were 22 maybe, so this is a very small number. And the center of that graph shows the gap between our English language learners and our non-English language learners in both math and reading. And the graph on the right is the reading proficiency, our language learners versus the state, and we do a little bit better on reading proficiency than we do on math proficiency. The number there is 23. 19 took the math, sorry. The next slide. This is free and reduced lunch, our other target population for reducing achievement gap. And our students in free and reduced lunch, we have 167 that we had test, and we definitely perform better than the state on the MCAs in math and reading. And then the gap is a lot smaller versus students who are receiving EL services.
Will we continue to use that terminology, free and reduced lunch, and measure it?
Yeah, but it's a different metric, even though lunch is free. They're qualifying them in a different way.
Yep. No, there's, so, yes, all lunches are free, but they still...
Still the category?
Yes, because the feds pay for the students who are free and reduced. The state is picking up the kids who do not qualify and paying the difference. So they still want students who are considered free or reduced to be putting in applications or through direct certification, and the state really only wants to pay for the ones that don't qualify.
Is there, is there any way to actually like enforce that, though? Or is it, like, if somebody didn't put in an application because they know it's going to get covered either way? Like, do we run the risk of the population being substantially different?
You know, last year, we had 33 applications and meals were not free. This year, we had 13. So it's only a difference of about 20. So, and for families, where it comes into play is that you can get reduced fees for community ed programs as well as activities and athletics, but that only falls, comes into play if you fill out an application and you qualify. So there is still a benefit to fill that out, even though meals are free.
So our, moving on to the next page. Our World's Best Workforce Goals next year, we're actually kind of rewording this because we want to create a percentage in what, in how many students we are going to count as improving in proficiency, if that's a great way to say it. So within each subgroup, our ELL, our special ed, and our free and reduced lunch, we will increase the number of students who meet or exceed proficiency by 5% or more as measured by the 2024 MCA reading, and we will... And we will increase the percentage of all students who meet or exceed by 5% or more on both of those assessments. So that amounts to about 14 students across the district, spread out among those target groups, and 45 students overall. Actions with Impact include the MTSS implementation, the professional learning on interpretation and use of screening data, win time, which has now been implemented in the high school. That's what I need time. So students who need special help can get extra help with, from their teachers to increase their likelihood of understanding the material. Science of Reading professional development, press training, and then focus on academic literacy through intensive vocabulary instruction. And that is at the high school, that is the main focus there for the professional development time we have. College and Career Ready by graduation. We take a look at the MCA scores for this, and there's a cut score on the MCAs that would be indicative of a child being able to find success in first year of college. That cut score on reading is 1058 and on math is 1152. So we find all of the students who achieve that, and we had 28.2% of 10th graders on the reading, which is where that college and career ready test is administered. And 43 points, 43% of 11th graders taking the math achieve CCR. Those are the only two tests that measure college and career readiness. You'll notice by the graph that that is a drop from the previous year, and I don't have a good answer on why that happened.
Other than we're looking at two groups of students, different groups of students...
From, yes, we are comparing a Macintosh apple to a Honeycrisp.
Can I ask a question on that?
What's that?
So your 10th grade college and career readiness score, is that a grade level score as well? Are they reading at grade level? Is that above grade level?
That's, they call it a cut score. So it's the way the MCAs are, the metric, the way they're scored within all of the psychometric data. And it, in a, if it, if a student achieves that score, it indicates that they will be able to manage college-level work as a freshman. It doesn't really tie to a grade level reading or specifically to a Lexile.
Do we know, like what score would be, because that would be obviously two grades above grade level reading for 10th grade. Do we know kind of where that grade level reading score would be?
Off the top of my head, I do not know.
Or do they give you guys that, I guess? Because...
No, they, students who achieve a 1050, there's another column that shows their Lexile. But I haven't analyzed that data to see. So that's the only, that's the only measure that I would have to know.
Because when we look at 20%, I'm like, well, okay, 20% aren't quite ready for college, but they're also not college age yet. So...
Yeah.
We're two years shy of that.
Yeah. Same with the math.
Yep.
All right. We have additional college and career readiness measures that we look at too. ACT results, next page. ACT, we had 172 students in the class of 23 and 24 combined take the ACT test, and 23.13 was our average for 2023. That is three points, more than three points above the state average. And we have, you know, a tendency, you can see by the graph, to always be several points above the state average. Next page. Advanced Placement. We had a whole bunch of kids take advanced placement, 190 students, 224 AP tests in four subjects, and 72% of those tests result in a score of three or more and college credit for those courses. Next page. We have concurrent enrollment, college in the schools, and we partner with three colleges for a whole bunch of classes. And next page. 152 students took college-level courses last year. That's combined with the, we had two sophomores take college-level courses. And then the rest are, were juniors and seniors. 401 total courses taken out of, over those 10 offerings. And a C or better gets you college credit and saves parents a whole bunch of money, $625,000 last year. Looking ahead, the district will increase the percentage of students achieving CCR from 28.2 to 41. That's just getting us back to where we go. I, you know, we don't believe in saying, oh, we're just going to do a little jump. Let's get back to where we were. We know that our students can do it. We know that our teachers are delivering good instruction. There's no reason why we can't make those moves. So math and reading will both go up. And our actions with impact, implementation of MTSS, professional learning on screening data, win time, and focus on academic literacy through intensive vocabulary instruction. And then our final goal, 100% of Delano High School students will graduate on time. We are about as close as we can get. We had 98%, and that is one student that we lost track of somewhere along the line. Can't, don't know what happened to that student after they departed Delano. So 201 students in the class of 2022. We, we're always a year delayed on this because the official graduation data doesn't come out until February. So we're reporting on the class of 2022. And we're going to continue to push for 100% on that World's Best Workforce Goal. Actions with Impact, next page. MTSS, win time, focus on liter, academic literacy. And then at the high school, we are implementing Character Strong during advisory time with the hope of being able to develop these relationships with our students so that we can help those kids who may be at risk along the pathway to graduating. There's the summary. And any questions or reflections?
Will we be incorporating the Science of Reading at the preschool level at any point?
It is required in legislation. Our preschool teachers do have to go through Science of Reading professional development. Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And up next, now the consent agenda. All right. That is last month's board minutes and all the financial affairs of the district. They are listed in great detail for anybody who wants to read them. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan, second.
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And resolution for the acceptance of gifts. All right. Whereas Coburn, Coburn's More Rewards, $1,503.52 for Delano Elementary School, Charities Aid Foundation America, $123.82 for Delano Intermediate School, DIS Pi, $300 for Delano Intermediate School Fall Conferences, and $781.95 for Rocket Math. Delano Loretto Area United Way, $700 for Delano Intermediate School Mental Health, $2,000 for Compass, and $1,000 for Youth Enrichment and Recreation Scholarships. Ohio Pie Print, $126.79 for Delano High School. DHS Pi, $155.92 for Power Shears for Industrial Tech. Stout, Stalky Bus, $72.80 for girls soccer goalie uniform. Delano Tiger Athletic Booster Club, $6,270.92 for three booster paid dance coaches. Franklin Township, $2,172 for Summer Rec. Dave's Town Club, $250. And Core Trust Bank, $150 for Orange Crush Robotics Team 3026. And a Sentry Mig Welder for Industrial Tech from Tim Parsons and a welder from Pat Conroy for Industrial Tech. These gifts have generally been offered to be donated to the Delano Public School District with the conditions mentioned above. Do we have a motion for the acceptance of gifts?
I'll say moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
And second by Corey. Any further discussion? Move to a roll call vote.
Board member Blake.
Aye.
Board member Deppa.
Aye.
Board member Schuester.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board make, board member Roser.
Aye.
And board member Gerke.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Up next is Personnel Matters. There's some retirements, supports mostly related, few things up there, a couple of leaves of absence. They're all there for people to see if they are interested. Do we have a motion to accept the Personnel Matters?
Come on.
Motion by Sue. Do we have second?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Administrative reports. First up is Superintendent Shane.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to give my monthly update for the month of November. Again, we try to do all of our programming under our district vision, which is systemic growth towards academic excellence for every learner. Just, I have two major things that I want to, one is, I talked quite a little bit more in depth about this during the work session, but also just not only our strategic planning process that will be through the calendar years of 2024 and '25, early '25 will complete the strategic planning process. But I'll throw just a little bit of an update on Bobby Dalkey's work and work with the ELT and our leadership teams with regards to our communications journey in the district. We have, as I've said, assembled our strategic planning team. We have about 20 internal stakeholders that will be a part of this process throughout the entire process. The planning process will kick off on Monday, January 8th with an educational leadership systems called ELS orientation session. And this will involve members of the board and the executive leadership team. So we'll have a consultant come in. This is January 8th, and it's prior to our organizational meeting, our annual organizational meeting, and we've got that for about two and a half hours, including some questions, but a good general overview of how we're going to look and view our educational leadership structure, our system, and then how it fits into the strategic planning process moving forward. The second session is called the Story Wall and Life Cycle. This is scheduled for Monday, January 15th, from about 3:15 to 6:15 in the Tiger Den. This includes the strategic planning team, community members, and other staff members that are not on the strategic planning team. And basically, this is reviewing how we got to where we are today. What's our history? We have purposely asked a number of staff members that have been with the district a long time to give us a little bit of a journey back and say, we need to look back in order to be able to understand of how we got to where we are today. So that's the second session. The third session, which is called an Environmental Scan, is scheduled for Thursday, February 8th, from 3:15 to 6:15 in the Tiger Den. And this is really measuring our current reality. What's our scan of how we are and what we're doing in our work today in the district? This again will include the same groups of people, the strategic planning team, community members, and staff members. So that brings us through February. Then we're going to do an engagement about our desired daily experience called the DDE. This, this is guided conversations that will be facilitated by our consultant with students, staff, and parents. Predominantly, these types of guided conversations will be done through February through March of 2024. Then we're going to go to our desired daily experience draft statements. This is going to be held on Monday, March 11th during the school day, and we'll have our strategic planning team or committee go through those draft statements, looking at potentially some of the data that could already have been collected, but just beginning to say, what is our desired daily experience for our students, our staff, our community members, our parent community as we go forward. Then we're going to survey, after the guided conversations, we're going to survey all of our secondary students, staff, and parents, and plan that survey during the month of April. So depending on when that gets built, that'll be built by our consultants. We'll survey, we'll use that as additional data on top of data we've already collected over the last two to three years, along with those guided conversations. And then we'll be refining those desired daily experience statements in the fall. So basically, in April, we're going to put a pause on our strategic planning process, take the summer off, kind of recoup and do some things at the leadership level to kind of make some adjustments to what we need to know before, as we find out and look at the data. And then come late September, we're going to pick it back up, and I'll give you more details on that as we move forward. Basically, we're culminating in, we're going to have a three-year operational plan and a three-year governance plan as we go through that. So that gives you a little bit more of a detailed step-by-step process for the first three sessions, survey and guided conversations that will be achieved starting in January through April of 2024. Just a brief update on our communications journey. CISO and Communications Director are designing and looking and navigating, are designing the look and navigation of our new website based on feedback received. Last month, Bobby shared with you some survey data, just on what we're looking at, what's our current website doing, what it's not doing, what are some priorities of things that people would like to see. So the website vendor is now migrating pages from the old website to the new website. The old website still our current website as we see it today, but we're doing that all behind the scenes as well. And then in late January, web representatives will update and add, delete content on the website based on feedback and based on internal dialogues too with our stakeholders. So we're doing a lot of work now behind the scenes. We've gone out there, we've done the survey, we're getting that information back, obviously. We're organizing it, and then that's driving what we're doing with our website behind, behind the scenes. We're looking at a website rollout of approximately April of 2024. And in addition to that, we'll probably share next month some more specifics on having a conversation about a logo and a mascot. We are the Tigers. If you look out there, as you well know, we're a lot of different Tigers. We want to be one Tiger, and we're going to have one logo. The Tiger could be incorporated within the logo, it could be separate, but we're going to be working and I'll share good news, Bobby will share good news as we move forward. That's going to be probably a two-month process, maybe a two and a half month process, culminating probably close to the same time period as we roll out our website. And that's it for my report. Does anybody have any questions as a superintendent?
Any questions for Matt? All right. Thank you, Matt. Moving on to intermediate principal, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I almost said of the jury. You can tell I've been on vacation watching Law &amp; Order of the Board. Thank you for having me here tonight to present to you on behalf of the intermediate school. I just have a few very short things to share with you this evening. November was really a pretty quiet month for us. Our main event that our site-based team, as well as our MTSS team, kind of worked through this month was giving the Saber Screener. At the intermediate school, the students did do the self-reflection piece, the My Saber Screener. They did that kind of from their own perspective, and then teachers completed the student screener portion. Really went very smoothly, did not take very much of our student time or our teacher time. We used our two-hour late start in November to accomplish that task. And then what we'll do is we'll have our MTSS team look at all of that data, kind of pull it together, do some summarizing, and we can start making some plans based on what we see. So that'll be coming up this week that they will meet to discuss that. Really, other than that, the only events that we've kind of got on our scheduler that we've had going on is we did kick off our Thanksgiving break with Turkey Bingo, which is always a crazy time in the office, but the kids have fun. And our pie group was really sweet this year. They sliced hundreds of apples and poured a lot of little cups of caramel, so the kids had their caramel apples. And they played bingo, and it was a really fun way to send kids off into the break. We did have about 30 kids in the office at one point that I was like, no more prizes! But it was fun, so. And then coming up, something that I am looking forward to, I've been working with a parent in our building, Kristin Schoonaveld, on starting a watchdogs program at DIS. Watchdogs is a program, dogs stands for Dads of Great Students. It's something he's been bringing to my attention now for the last couple of years. And it is a really cool program that specifically targets dads and positive male role models to come and volunteer in the school. And the idea behind it... And the idea behind it really is obviously the value of male role models, but also their role being more of an extra set of eyes, supervising, engaging. So we've been kind of working and drumming up support and interest with our parents, and so I'm really excited. We're starting with just Tuesdays and Thursdays between now and December. We've got at least one or two dads, at least two dads coming in every day. They're coming in in the morning block to help with our morning supervision, be at the sixth grade lockers, welcome kids to school. And then we have a middle-of-the-day block that they've committed to come do, so they'll do some recess supervision, some lunch supervision. They get to spend some time with their kids in their class, but really the idea is that they're in those really busy places with lots of kids moving around, a lot of things happening, and they just get to be that positive presence. They do a little orientation when they come in, and when they leave, we take their picture with their student for the wall of fame. So I'm really hoping we can build momentum with this because I do think it's a really great idea and just a good way and a different way to engage dads to come into school. So that's starting on Tuesday, and I do want to thank Chris, like I said, he's worked hard to kind of get this going as well. That is what is happening at the Intermediate School. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Thompson?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is High School Principal, Mr. Voight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the high school. November is kind of the dullest month of the calendar year, to be honest. Fortunately, it was not dull with respect to our activities, particularly our female athletes. As probably everyone knows, our girls volleyball team was the state runner-up in the class AAA volleyball championship. Equally impressive, but maybe a little less well-known, was the success of our girls swim and dive team who took fifth place overall. And Hannah Wadholm, Abby Gerke, Josie Strobel, Kaia Georges, and Candy Menz all participated on at least one of our two third-place relay teams. And for individuals that reached the podium, those were our Nora Segwin and Josie Strobel. So congratulations to all of our participants on the girls swim and dive team. Congratulations. Our cross-country teams placed, both of them placed sixth at state, both the boys and the girls. And that's about it for our state participants with activities, but I also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Tori Spanier, who, if you've seen the recent newspaper article, there's a big, kind of a nice spread on the back cover. He was a finalist for Teacher of the Year within Project Lead the Way. He was one of 38 finalists. As you know, Tori is a master teacher within that organization and trains teachers all across the country and brings a lot of innovative opportunities to our students here in Delano and has for quite some time. So congratulations to all of those folks. With respect to things that are happening in the school year, believe it or not, I know Sophie mentioned this during the work session, this is the last week of trimester one, and kids are furiously getting ready for finals. Finals is going to occur on Thursday and Friday of this week. We do have a modified schedule for finals, and I know Ms. Dalkey put out a nice email and has put information on Facebook and things, but at the secondary level, our finals schedule runs from 8 until 12:20 on both Thursday and Friday. There is an optional lunch from 12:20 to 12:50, and then students are able to stay at school and work with their teachers if they have an appointment for the remainder of that day. What's most important, however, is that buses will run as normally scheduled at 3:00 on Thursday, but buses will run across the district on Friday at 1:00 p.m. So assuming that everybody is prepared for that slight calendar change. With respect to site-based leadership team, the things that we're working on now, we're still exploring, obviously, opportunities to bring in student speakers. We're in the process of conducting reference checks and background checks and those sorts of things, as well as exploring other options. But with respect to school climate, we're going to conduct our school climate survey next week in advisory. So as you recall, that's our one primary school improvement goal, is to improve the levels of inclusion and respect, and we'll get our first data point for the year on Tuesday of next week. In addition to the work of, related to school climate, our site-based team is also in conversations about how to tailor courses for next year with respect to the registration process. Believe it or not, registration for the 24, 25 school year is right around the corner, and so we're having conversations about how to tweak different class offerings and things like that. And at least, I should say, in addition to tweaking what we currently offer, it's also incorporating some of the new legislative mandates that have come down this past session. Most of those are at least going to impact next year's freshmen, so we think we're in a pretty good spot to make sure that we are accountable to the new laws and also, of course, providing good experiences for our students. The one thing that I'm perhaps most excited about is the implementation of a college and career exploration course that's required for our ninth graders. The purpose of this class is to give them some kind of introductory adulting lessons, topics like introductory personal finance, things like job search skills, resume, you know, interview skills and those sorts of things. But most importantly is to help assist them in identifying a possible future path. As you know, I've spoken before about the opportunity that we had to bring in Luke Greiner as a guest speaker to talk about flipping the decision. So the idea that we want students to identify a future career and then do the research to figure out what educational pathway is appropriate for that career, and then obviously we can start to tailor our high school opportunities to prepare our students for those future opportunities. I like the fact that it's in ninth grade because hopefully it will create a little bit more purpose and intention with course selection from the ninth through 12th grade into the beyond. So with that, that finalizes my prepared comments for this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the high school.
Any questions for Mr. Voight? Thank you, Mr. Voight. Up next, elementary principal, Ms. Schultz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks for having me on behalf of the elementary school this evening. Just a couple of brief things. We also did the Sabers in November at our late start, and for the elementary school, that is just a teacher rating scale. So each teacher rates each one of their individual students based on certain criteria, and then we kind of get all that data together. So over the break, I did nerd out a little bit on the Sabers data just because I was kind of curious, because we do this, right? And then we learn about it, and then it's sort of like, now what? What are we going to do? How is this going to help us? Initially, it was, it really kind of aligned with where we are on track with our MTSS process, which was really great to see. DES had 2% high-risk students, which is about 16 students total out of 700. And of those 16, those 16 are already receiving intense services and/or are already on our SST schedules. So I think we have the right kind of guidelines guiding us as far as what kids need and how we are supporting them. So it really solidified kind of the direction that we're going and that Sabers is helping us sort of identify and then affirm what we are doing. The next level of that will be to kind of look at those some-risk students, to make sure that we're not missing any students and what they might need, if it's an extra check-in, checkout, social skills group, something like that. So of our population, we had 14% in that some-risk category, so that's in your 80s range of students. And then we had 84% in low-risk, which I think also aligns with that MTSS category of wanting to have 80% or higher within that low-risk category. So we'll continue to dig in more to that. Teachers obviously have their own data, but it's nice to kind of look at that as a building level and then come together with our teams to address things at a building-wide need. Additionally, we have some community partnerships and events coming up in the month of December. We have our first-grade blanket drive that started, and those blankets go to foster families. And we have our holiday helpers that are social workers, work with Friends for a Cause, and so we adopt a family to provide some things for them over the holidays. We have our third Family Resource Night coming up this Thursday. Janelle Olson, our social worker, partners with Wright County, and each month that she's had that, she's had families there, and she's been able to provide some county resources that they didn't know about, or some more specialized resources for maybe some assessments that their child might need, or we have this going on at our house, how can you help us? And just a wealth of knowledge. So those Family Resource Nights have been really, really helpful for some of our families. And then we have our holiday sing-along and readathon coming up in December, which is a nice way to celebrate all the holidays. And additionally, our site-based leadership team is just continuing to work on our tier-one professional development. We have had some room movements and some staffing shifts just with spaces and student-staff needs, so we're always kind of finding where we can find some new homes for people. And then we reflected on our conferences from October, and overall, really good feedback on that, 15 minutes in person was great. We're still looking at ways to offer that virtual option for families that if they've got a lot of kids, busyness, whatever, they might need to offer that as an option still for them. And then I just want to do a quick recognition of three groups of people. We started to have some cafeteria volunteers in our cafeteria, and so we've had six dedicated parents come in each week to the elementary cafeteria, which some people run away from because it's just a busy place, and there's a lot of milk carton opening and syrup spills and, you know, a variety of things going on. But they, they have really helped out a lot in there. There's times where Mr. Ludwig and I aren't able to make it, but then they're there, so then the teachers don't always have to be in there constantly if Paul and I are not able to make it. So we really appreciated their volunteering opportunity. And then our pie group, they've done an amazing job with their fundraiser, of course, and this particular group is really looking at ways that we can engage our family and our communities. So whether it's a before-school event, like a breakfast-type thing, or during the day, I know that there were some events prior to COVID that happened during the day that we haven't really found our way back to. So they've been kind of brainstorming some new ways to do that. And then additionally, after-school events too. So it sounds like there's a family bingo night that's getting planned in the works. So we're always looking for ways to engage with our families within the school day and outside of school hours. And then we finally have our last Kids Hope Mentor Program, spot filled. So we had 10 mentors matched now with 10 students. So Lana Jos is kind of the head of that, and she and I meet monthly and to assign some mentors for some kids that are in need of that. So that's been going really well. Any questions or comments?
Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Business Manager, Mary Reader.
During the work session, we went over our FY23 budget, and you just heard the audit presentation as well. So our general fund expenditures, unassigned fund balance ended at 15.4% last year. And with the budget revision that I just did, our enrollment is up about 15 kids from what had been originally budgeted. So last year, our K-12 enrollment was 2,378. Right now, we're sitting at 2,391 for K-12. So that's an increase of about $140,000 in revenue. Based on those projections, I think we'll still be at around a 15% fund balance at the end of this year. And that does include doing the transfer, the staff development transfer of $144,000 that currently is showing up in the budget. So that's still something we can discuss at the end of the year. If we really want to make that transfer net, it'll depend on how things are shaking out. We may or may not want to do that, but it's still out there as an option. The revenue, new revenue streams, they're all the same. I did want to update on the summer unemployment. So the state put aside $135 million to be used through 2027 for summer unemployment. They did a survey of all the districts, charter schools, and cooperatives, and about $40 million was used this first summer. So our cost was a little over $63,000, and we're supposed to get our first payment towards that in the next week or two. So that will still fully be covered, so that's a good thing. Otherwise, food service is looking very strong, as well as community ed, and things are good. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Reader?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Community Education, Mr. Ellenson.
Thanks for having me here to talk about community education. I took a different framework when looking at our continuous improvement plan. When we look at our five principles, one of those is continuous improvement. So it's embedded to everything we do. But what I want to do tonight is talk about some of the challenges that we face. And then that is a big piece of what we're going to be working on. And if we go to, you know, our guide principles are there, but our set of challenges that have come up is there's been some recent legislative changes that impact our programs directly. A couple of those things is that the state is now going to be requiring licensure for all preschool teachers. It's a great thing. It kicks in fiscal '28, and it is symbolic of the importance that we're putting on preschool. Another piece to that that is also symbolic is that all preschool teachers are going to be part of the master agreement now. That's a pretty significant change. There's going to be implications with that change, and of course, with our programs, we know that there's no funding that follows that. So as, as we make these adjustments and as these teachers are now part of the master agreement, there could be some changes that impact our programs on how we operate. And I just want to make sure that that is out there, that we're aware of that, and these are, these are pieces that we have to navigate as legislation comes through. Another piece that also came through on legislation is the change for sick and safe time. This has a pretty big implication for part-time employees who maybe previously didn't receive this benefit, and this will also have financial implications for a number of our employees that are part-time that will be receiving a new benefit that has cost implications associated with it. So part of the process that we've done is, you know, Sarah had mentioned it, this I-Rot process that we're going through as a district, we're going to be using that to look at how we tackle some of these big issues. So we're going to make sure that we look at this from a full, full aspect, get as much information as we can, looking at the options on how we move forward and making the decisions. So that's a piece when it comes to early learning, some changes. And then we have some inherent staffing challenges, and two areas in particular is when it comes to school-age childcare and when it comes to aquatics. And these are two areas that have seen negative implications post-COVID, and these are two markets that have not recovered. New York Times has estimated between 80,000 to 100,000 jobs in the childcare industry were lost post-COVID and haven't recovered. It's one of the slowest recovering workforces in our country, and those jobs aren't expected to come back. A lot, a lot of what's been referenced on why it isn't is that it's a, it's a position that pays a relative average hourly wage, and we have seen that a lot of other industries have changed their hourly wages, and those workers have shifted over and have not come back. Well, that's a challenge we face locally as well. You know, we run programs for children before and after school that are staffed. We're relying on a lot of teenage staff to run those programs. So finding and keeping adult staff is a challenge. What our team has done is they've looked at how they handle onboarding, how they handle professional development. We have gone through a litany of ways to try to recruit staff, but their focus is developing staff that we do have, and we will continue to address those challenges moving forward. But it is, it's an ongoing challenge. Another piece with that is our aquatic side, both when it comes to lifeguards and water safety instructors. They're very difficult to find right now. That's been the case for probably decades, but we've seen it exasperated post-COVID as well. Two things with that is that when you, when you look at a quacks program from a swimming lesson perspective, I think there's opportunities for us to reframe how we do that. When you look at it from a lifeguarding perspective, we don't really have an opportunity to reframe that. State statute requires that we provide a Red Cross certified lifeguard when we have things going on in the pool. That Red Cross certification is not required when it comes to swimming lessons. So I think we have an opportunity to look at how we operate our swimming lessons, maybe reframe how we do it, maybe look at a different curriculum, but those challenges exist on, on that staff as well. We had a recent advisory council meeting, and one of the discussions we talked about was swimming lessons. And one of our members, you know, just flat out said, well, I bring my kids, and we go to a private pool, we spend $20 for a half-hour lesson taking place in the backyard. And then the question is, well, like, how do we compete with that? Well, you know, we don't pay our staffs $40 per hour in cash, so there are inherent challenges with, with now how the market has shifted post-COVID, where people are going for their swimming lessons and the services that we can provide. So I think it's a good time to look at what we do, really focus on which customers we service with our lessons, and figure out how to create a model that will be effective. So those are two big challenges, especially on staffing. And then a third one that I wanted to talk about is, I know at our last meeting, we had a lot of discussions about football and equipment and the expense, and how do we account a lot of discussions about football and equipment and the expense, and how do we account for those ongoing expenditures? Well, we're facing the same thing when you look at other programs, when you look at seventh and eighth-grade football, when we look at fifth and sixth-grade football. The aging of equipment and the new recommendations and mandates on how we have to provide that equipment has created an issue that there's going to be financial implications. Chris Ranky and I ran numbers just to try to figure out if we were to get all of our equipment at the seventh and eighth-grade level up so it meets code, so our helmets are certified, so our shoulder pads are current. We're looking in excess of about $25,000 just to get that program to be at a level where we have equipment that is, where it should be to make sure our helmets are certified. In addition to that would be, you know, getting jerseys that are current. And we're facing the same issue when you look at fifth and sixth-grade football. So those high equipment sports are going to be an issue, both at the high school level as well as it trickles down. So we're going to look at how we proceed with that in those types of activities that maybe will require a different, how we frame that model. You know, we benefited this past year from the audit report, is that we had a great year. We had high participation. We also benefited from utilizing federal grants during this past year. That won't be there from year from now. But as we look at some of those expenditures and think about, how do we equip this? You know, the use of fund balance for ongoing expenditures, in my view, is a very poor decision. It's not as sustainable. Using some fund balance to support one-time expenditures can be a good use of those dollars. The tricky part with these equipment costs is that it might appear like a one-time expenditure, but it has continuous, ongoing expenses that are associated with it. So every helmet we buy, we have to throw another 60 bucks into it every two years to make sure that's recertified. So these are no longer, you know, equipment-based. We're not buying a basketball standard. These are now consumable products, which makes these challenges even more substantive if we look at how do we support some of these programs. So I really just wanted to talk about some of these challenges that we're facing and that us in a community ed team are going through the process to handle these challenges, to face these challenges, to come out still focusing on what's best for our community, our consumers, and our programs. But these are real issues that we need to work through in order to make these sustainable programs. So I just want to make sure that's out there, that we talk about it, that you're aware of what we're working on. And from there, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I guess I have one question, kind of thinking about the last two challenges you brought up with staffing and then the football thing. Like, I think they're very different challenges, as you mentioned. But given we just, kind of via the budget information, and you can't always count on the year that we had this year being next year and whatever else, the early childhood and/or pre-post-care-type issue seems very much like an operating problem in terms of, like, staffing shortages. And I often think to myself, like, okay, if they're, you know, modestly-paid hourly positions and other areas are adjusting to pay more money, like, how much money is the right amount of money that it would take to fill those positions? Is it $5 an hour more, $10 an hour more? And what would that look like from, like, an expense model that would be sustainable to not make that shortage hurt so bad? I assume you guys probably are doing all of that. I just, I don't know what, like, that one seems very operational to me. This one seems a little different and more muddy. I don't know what your opinion is on that, but like, what can we do?
When we developed the last handbook for community ed, which had a new pay scale in it, we expanded the pay scale to give our staff more flexibility, to be able to slide people to different levels to meet changing needs in the market. What we have seen so far is that regardless of pay, we're not seeing a lot of candidates so far. So I think pay is one thing you could look at. But regardless, we're not seeing a lot of candidates come through our door right now. And that, like I said, that's being seen nationwide. You know, any of these things that, there are implications. And we could, you could continue to slide that higher and higher until you find that point. But in a system, in a public education system, that will also have implications on the general fund as well. Because we will have other groups that will then say, "They're making this much in TKC. We're going to need more here to do what we do." So there's a lot of pieces with this that are tied. But I'm not sure if that's the complete answer as far as just raising until we find that point. You know, there is a piece of what we do, the fact that these hours are between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m. and also between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. That is where we really need people. Those hours aren't overly desirable, so there's an inherent challenge there. But that is the time when our families need childcare. So there's not an easy answer, but we are exploring everything we can in order to try to solve that equation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Up next, student board reps.
For the elementary this month, it was kind of a fun, light month with exciting Halloween parties, presentations for Veterans Day, as well as some students going to sing to the States of Delano, a school-wide pajama party, and a successful school-wide fundraiser to help raise money for new gym equipment. That all happened this month. And as Ms. Schultz said, parent lunch helpers are going well, and that's exciting. We also had the opportunity to talk with some second-grade students, and they are all very positive about the school year. They're loving their teachers, loving their classes, classmates. They said they are getting more homework this year compared to first grade, and they do want naptime back. But besides that, everything was positive. And then for the intermediate school?
The intermediate, pretty good, pretty straightforward. They're doing something called the Tiger Store, which I think is an amazing idea for kids at this age, which encourages students to make good choices. And they get tickets, and they get to spend those tickets on things they might like. And there's also a class competition among all grades, which makes it more competitive for everyone else, which is always fun. And Turkey Bingo Tuesday took place, as Ms. Thompson explained, where students could bingo, and they'd run down to the office to get prizes and everything else. And I also met with students as well in this building, and students kind of like the schedule change from fifth to sixth grade because it, like, kind of helps them better understand it. And just, like, from my feedback as a whole, I don't know how to explain it, but the student, it feels like a really, like, happy and, like, jumpy environment. Like, some kids kind of go to school and they just dread it, and that's just how some people are. But like, these kids were happy, jumpy, engaged, everything was good. It was just a good feeling. So that's definitely a good sign. But yeah, high school.
So this month, we saw an increase from, when time going from two times a month to two times a week. That was kind of the biggest change for this school. So far, it's going well. It's a big adjustment as, like, the week, the schedules are a little different. But overall, just a really good feeling, I think, across the board. Students, you know, having that relief of having time to catch up on their assignments and their quizzes and their tests, which I think is good, especially with finals coming up this Thursday and Friday, which is kind of crazy to think that we're already a third of the way through the year. And then overall, this school year, behavioral issues have been on the increase throughout the year, but are decreased compared to last year, which is always good to look at. And then Willie and I are planning, in the planning processes of the club fair, which we're getting excited for. You want to talk more about that?
Yeah, so we're doing a club fair on December 21st to kind of up student engagement with clubs and everything else. And during the work session, I did say, there's actually seven, not six. I just didn't write the names and highlight one. So pretty good. We might add a few more things to it, and then we're going to have a table to kind of show students how to create their own clubs. And then on student feedback for the high school as well, I wanted to talk about the guest speaker that came in and kind of talked about the switcheroo thing. I got actually really positive feedback from that because a lot of schools don't really give, like, it's kind of like, a lot of schools have, like, one kind of common goal, like, just college, kind of. And that speaker kind of made, like, he kind of opened all perspectives. Like, just college is simply not for some people, and there's a lot of other options, too, like trade school and everything else. So that was definitely a big thing with students making decisions and everything else. So yeah, it was a pretty good month. But yeah.
Any questions for our student board reps?
Thanks, guys.
Moving on to board reports. First up is Masiko. I'm assuming Amy attended, and she's not here, unless somebody else attended for her. All right, minutes are attached. And following that is Wright Tech.
Wright Tech had their audit as well, just like we had here. And the director is working with the superintendents and the business managers as funding for Wright Tech is down, but it is what it is. You really just have to get out of the red and operating. Maybe it's something Matt could update a little bit, or, yeah?
Yeah, we've been meeting, actually, for the court probably through a majority of the spring, and obviously, August was a big meeting. We didn't host, Wright Tech Center hosted business managers and superintendents. And just due to some unforeseen long-term facility maintenance-type issues, some other pieces that came down the line that took a hit on the fund balance. But we've obviously come up with some solutions, making sure that they can cash flow. Their fund balance is right around $50,000. That's way below a fund balance that they should be having. But we made some adjustments for fiscal year just with cash flow. For example, member districts will be billed sooner, like in the first quarter or first, even first half, because in the fall, that's the time when school districts have a majority of the funding from the state. As you know from the auditor's report, that's a huge portion of our budget. So there was a suggestion by marrying a few other business managers to, hey, instead of cash flow borrowing, you should be billing us in advance for these types of things because we know what the bill's going to be monthly. Bill isn't advanced the first quarter or the first, whatever the period be, to help with that. And that will be a good solution moving forward, just on a regular piece. But I think there's got to be further in-depth discussions about where are we at with, you know, our fund balance? How do we address it? Wright Tech Center is not going away. Every single district will make sure of that. That's why it is a center that's been around since the mid-'70s, and it is valuable. We have a large percentage of our juniors and seniors, I shouldn't say a large percentage. We have had a larger growing number of students going to the Wright Tech Center. And so we're not, you know, that is an efficient way to get some coursework at that junior and senior year that would be extremely inefficient for individual districts to do it. That's why we have this Wright Tech Center. It's the same concept through Masiko. It would be extremely expensive for us to be required to provide special services on our own for students of all ranges of abilities and aptitudes. It's the same thing. We don't have automotive services in the high school anymore. Those days are gone because of the expense that's involved. So what we did, and very forward-thinking, many districts in the area put together and established the Wright Tech Center. It's just a matter of that we'll continue to be working on it. We'll be continuing to be supporting our executive director and making sure that they get back into a fiscally responsible model. It reminds me of about five years ago, and I looked at community ed, and I said, "Houston, we got a problem." Well, Wright Tech Center has a problem, but we'll fix it. It's just non-negotiable.
I mean, we're also doing some good things with reevaluating the courses that we're offering and just updating the courses that are available to year to the high schools. Yeah.
Sounds good. Any questions for Jim? All right, moving on. Up first is the approval of the Facilities Use Manual. We've discussed it a few times. Do you have a motion to approve the Facilities Use Manual?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Corey. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Following that up is cooperative sponsorship with Orno for a speech team. We discussed that in work session. Do we have someone who would like to motion the cooperative sponsorship with Orno for a speech team?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second by Corey. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And approve the first read of policy 413, the harassment and violence policy. They have a motion to approve the first read of 413. Motion by Sue.
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then we have, sorry, approve the first read of policy 416, the drug and alcohol testing policy. Motion to approve the first read of 416. It's all moved. Motion by Sarah. Second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve the first and only read of policy 506, the student discipline policy.
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan. Second by?
Second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And approve the 8:00 p.m. Monday, January 8th, 2024, as the date for the 2024 organizational meeting in the Delano High School Tiger Den.
Madam Chair, I would propose that we move that time to 7:30 for the organizational meeting. If you recall, we're going to shorten up the educational leadership strategic planning session systems to, from 5:00 to 7:30, and then we can follow the organizational meeting right at 7:30 and 8:00 to 8:00 o'clock.
So do I need a motion to amend, or do I just need to change it?
You don't need a motion to amend. Well, technically, if it's written into the agenda at 8:00 p.m., I would entertain a board member to make an amendment to change the date to 7:30.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend the time to 7:30 for the Monday, January 8th date?
I'll amend.
All right, Ryan's making the motion to amend. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion on 13F, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Now, do we have a motion to approve the 7:30, Monday, January 8th, 2024, as a date for the 2024 organizational meeting in the Delano High School Tiger Den?
So I move.
All right, we have a motion by Jim. Do we have a second? Second by Sue. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes as well. So we are now at 7:30. And I'm sure Matt will send us a reminder thingy. Public comment. The school patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding dean items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. Do we have anybody for public comment? Nope. All right, moving on. With all business complete, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion by Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sue. With that, we are adjourned.